Call this meeting of the Bucks County Board of Commissioners to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and Sean Loughlin, the person behind the camera, will lead us in the pledge today.
What allegiance to do by the night? One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So now that we are under even more restrictive orders, we have, you know, even less people in the room, but we do have one row office, if you'd like to introduce yourself.
I'll represent that. Matt Wainter, folks, can you be there?
Good morning.
No question. I think these things will come in through 10:05, but it's not as now.
Okay. Is there any comments on the agenda items from anyone in the audience? Okay. Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of November 18th, 2020, and Resolutions 1 through 16E?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Moving to the regular agenda. The first item is with the Commissioners, item 17. This is a contract with the Bucks County Industrial Development Authority, and it's actually a resolution amending the Articles of Incorporation. And Ms. McKevitt, did you want to review that?
So what I will add, Commissioner, is that this, this resolution allows the redevelopment, I'm sorry, the Industrial Development Authority to continue to provide tax refinancing to businesses and nonprofit organizations throughout the county.
Any questions? Any questions on that? And number 19 for the, sorry, 18 for the Health Department, Pennsylvania Department of Health, the Office of Public Health Preparedness in Harrisburg, is providing revenue in the amount of $15,809,378. This is a one-time grant to augment the overall response related to the control of COVID-19 virus, including laboratory capacity, surveillance, potential vaccination, and distribution, and it runs from July 20, 2020 until November 20, 2022. Is there anybody that wants to talk about that or more? Do you want, sure?
So a couple of things. We will be using CARES funding through the end of the year. The funding that we are receiving from the state will help us continue our COVID-19 pandemic relief efforts in the county, supporting not only the increased testing and surveillance, but also the staffing in the Health Department.
Any questions on that? Commissioner, questions?
No.
Okay. And number 19, the Planning Commission with contract with Scan Tech Incorporated out of Willow Grove, Pennsylvania. We will approve a contract to digitally scan and archive files needed due to the COVID-19 pandemic in the amount of $105,729. Margie, anything on that one?
Yes, I will. This is a project that's been, will be extremely useful and helpful, not only to the, to the staff at the, in the Planning Commission, it is scanning all of the Act 247 plans, which are land development and subdivision plans going back to the 50s, so that they can access them anywhere that they may be. Will also be made available to the public as well in the future, so that you will be able to click on a map, a tax parcel number, and be able to see whatever documents we have in the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Any questions on that? And I believe our row offices, row office treasurer, Chris Ballerini, has joined us, so I just wanted to say hello. And the next one, I'm not sure if the Prithonitary was able to be here today, but there's a contract with Paperless Solutions Incorporated out of Ben Salem, and it's an amendment of the master agreement to create a process that will allow for the addition and indexing of scanned images of the microfilm archive collection into the current case management system in the amount of $2,450. Since I don't see, see her, maybe our clerk, Gail Humphrey, can tell us a little bit about this.
Are you hearing my feedback?
Yep.
Thank you, Commissioner. To my understanding, the purpose of this project is to take microfilm images that are stored in, currently, we store a lot of our county documents in Iron Mountain, and I think what this project's going to do is turn some of those documents into something called a PDF-A. A is PDF, like PDF document, A for archival. It will allow these documents to be historically recorded and kept and saved up on the cloud, and they'll be more readily available for people who need to come in and retrieve those documents and access them through the Prithonitary's office. I think some of our other rows are looking into this new technology as well, especially because a lot of our employees are teleworking right now. It is, it's, it's not easy. It's a little bit cumbersome to get microfilm, once it's been archived and stored. So this is kind of new technology. It's bringing us up into being a lot more immediate, is the word I think, is, is a good word to use, to say that these documents will be readily available and quickly retrievable.
Terrific. Is there questions?
No.
Commissioner, questions?
No.
All right. Thank you very much. And number 21, workforce and economic development, and Commissioner Harvey will talk a little bit about this, and this is to approve the final list of Bucks Back to Work Round Three Grant recipients pending the Controller's Review. Commissioner Harvey, did you?
Thank you. Yeah, as, as people know, we did two rounds of Bucks Back to Work Grants, one in the June time period and then another sort of September, October time period. We did launch a third one, using specifically our economic development agencies, the Industrial Development Agency, the Economic Development Corporation, Visit Bucks County, as well as the Redevelopment Authority. And they all use their network to go through and find businesses, reach out to them, and coordinate, you know, grants that would go to them, similar to the grants we gave out before. So we have a little under 300 businesses that are receiving grants. Again, these are small businesses, 49 employees or less, and businesses that, you know, make somewhere in the area, less than $2 million in terms of total revenue. And so want to thank them for all the work. You know, this brings, somewhere in the neighborhood, it's, it's getting close to about $30 million of funding that we've given out to small businesses since, really back since the pandemic started. So we appreciate all the work of those agencies. Our COO, Margie McKevitt, was the really kind of driving force behind this kind of idea, doing it this way. So thank her for all her work, and really excited to, you know, to give this money out and keep these businesses going.
And so what's the total that, from all the grants? Do you know how many businesses we've totally helped?
About 1,600. Yeah, it's about 1,600, between 15 and 1,600 businesses.
That's, that's great. Thank you. Did you want to add anything, Ms. McKevitt, to that?
No. I think, I think.
Comment? I mean, and I, everyone knows we've used the CARES money that we got from the federal government, which was about $109 million, and I, I think, and I, we put the money into different areas, but I think this money that we put into helping businesses out, especially small business, was very, very well spent and very useful. And I mean, I've heard from a lot of them how much it meant to the small business. It meant keeping people employed, keeping the businesses open, and I, I think we've almost spent, not, not quite a third of it on, on this, these small business grants, but pretty close to it. So, and I, I just think it was a terrific idea, and again, like to commend Commissioner Harvey for, for taking the lead on this, and, and, you know, the number of staff people. Our COO, Margie, had a big hand, she played a big hand in this, and some of the other staff people for the, for the great work that they've done in putting this all together. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's, I echo every good.
Sure. So one additional program that the Commissioners approved was the purchase of PPE for our businesses, and those boxes should be arriving late this week or early next week, and will be distributed through the Chamber of Commerce. So if, if you are a business out there that needs PPE, contact your local Chamber of Commerce, Upper Central Lower, and Bucksmont, to get on the list to receive the PPE.
And as I understand it, you don't have to necessarily be a member of the Chamber of Commerce, any business?
That's exactly right.
Okay. Terrific. Any questions? All right. Terrific. Is there a motion to approve items 17 through 21 on the regular agenda?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay. Moving on to personnel actions. Is there a motion to approve the personnel actions for today?
Commissioner, if I could suggest that the board take two votes. First, the Personnel Act, I think, have 49 appointments suggested, and I would suggest doing a vote on appointment number 13 separately.
Okay.
And then a, a second vote for the remainder, which we won through 12 and 14, 49. And I believe Commissioner Harvey wanted to make a record before a vote was taken on appointment number 13.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve Personnel Action number 13?
Second.
All those in favor?
Commissioner, before, before the vote, I think the Commissioner just wanted.
Oh, okay. I was going to let him do it after, but that's fine.
That's right. And I'm just, I'm checking here, just verifying, it actually is number 13, because the list I have doesn't have it on it. But anyway, number 13 is.
It's 13 on here.
It is on there?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. My son, who was hired as a PerDiM employee to help out during the COVID, is on the list, so I'm going to abstain from hiring him. Nothing against his character, just, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Abstentions?
Abstention, yes.
Thank you. Okay. Is there a motion to approve 1 through 12 and 14 through 49 on the personnel list?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Any board appointments today, Commissioner Harvey?
Yeah, we do have some board appointments to the Workforce Development Board. My phone was malfunctioning, so I wasn't able to get it. Now it's suddenly magically working, so that's good. The Workforce Development Board is a county board that provides guidance to the Community and Economic Development Department here at the county and the Workforce Development Agency. It's really designed to have employers, managers of businesses from various backgrounds, as well as other people in, involved in workforce development, whether it's through education or through training programs, to have all of them meet, to provide guidance to us, that we can provide the best training, the best programs possible to help match employees to employers, to help people who are struggling to find work, to find either training, to improve their skills, or help them develop, you know, various, you know, the soft skills, as they, as they call them, resume writing and interview building, all those kinds of things. So the Workforce Development Board is set up through a state guideline. It's very specific in terms of the people you're allowed to have on, and so what we've been trying to do, and to help my assistant, Steve Soufert, as well as Billy Barnes, head of Workforce Development, and Diana Crowley, in her office over the past month or so, have really been working hard to fill all of these gaps. So the, with new appointments we have, all of them are for three-year terms, will all expire on November 1st, 2023. Representing small business, we have John Mercer and Dana Pezza, Chris Wilson, Jessica Pfeiffer. Representing larger businesses, Lou Cassa. Representing youth servicing agencies, Jennifer Wendling, and representing post-secondary education, Yolanda Ubardi. And so I'll make a motion to have all of those people appointed to the Workforce Development Board for a three-year term.
Second.
Okay. Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? And moving on to other civics, does anybody have any other civics? Anybody? I have just one for the National Alliance of Mental Illness, NAMI, a grant of $2,000, and I'll make that in a motion.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I actually had another one, too. It was the Peace Valley Holistic Center. We do an annual contribution of $3,000 to them, so I'll make that as a motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay. Chief Operating Officer's report. Ms. McKevitt, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. A couple of things. One, I think there was an announcement, I know on Facebook, and, and it has been in the paper, the Commissioners decided to have our offices and our departments, for the most part, telework where possible, and that means that we will be moving to appointments for services in those departments and the offices. If you need services of the county, I would direct you to the website to see if those services are available online, or contact the departments and offices directly to make an appointment. There will be someone in the office at all times, so you will be able to get a live person on the phone. If you, if you have difficulty doing that, email the office or contact our Public Information Office, and we'll, we'll, we'll get you to the right agency or department that you need to be in touch with. Around that, along that same lines, the Commissioners had a meeting with our Health Department staff about a week and a half ago, and in those discussions, there were a couple things that we, we evaluated, and one of them was the data portal that we provide out to the public. We've modified that and changed that, so that the links to the state data, which has become a tremendous resource throughout the state, and has come close to what our data is, we've, we've converted those links so that you will be able to see the COVID case counts and the hospital utilization rates. There's a wealth of information on the state's data site, along with a map that provides case counts and other information by zip code. It's a little bit different than the way we have been doing it, but it's just as useful, and we hope that you'll be able to navigate your way to that. If you need help doing that, please reach out to us, and, and we will help you do that. It's represented a little bit differently, but it's, again, it serves the same purposes. We, what we also learned was that the, the most frequently asked question of the Health Department was, where do we get tests? And we, the County Planning Commission and the Health Department created a map that you can access through the COVID portal to locate sites within the county. Some sites require appointments, there are some that don't, that you can drive through. We are also looking into increased testing facilities and, and getting increased testing. Our Commissioner, Marceglia, has worked with our Human Services and Housing Services Agencies to develop protocols for our blue, our shelter providers during cold nights, and hopefully during cold days as well, to serve our vulnerable population and get access to testing and healthcare. What we'd like to see is increased testing for our vulnerable population, and we will do that through the use of the grant funds that the Health Department has received. I also want to make mention that the, the 2021 budget, preliminary budget, is available on the website. The Commissioners are going to be hosting a hearing on the proposed 21 budget, 2021 budget, next Wednesday, December 9th, at 6:30. It will be here, it will be livestreamed. If you can go to the website and submit your questions through the website address and, and email address, that would be helpful. We, we would love to hear your comments and your questions, and we look forward to next Wednesday to discuss the 2021 budget.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Nope.
Okay. Solicitors' report.
Thank you, Commissioner. So I'm happy to, I hope, close the loop on a few threads that have kind of run throughout the year. First of all, I, I hope and expect this will be the last litigation update that we'll provide in connection with the 2020 election. At previous meetings, we provided a number of updates about all the lawsuits that have been filed, mostly on behalf of, in connection with the Trump campaign. And at our last meeting, there was a case pending before Judge Baldi in the Court of Common Pleas in Bucks County. The Trump campaign had challenged the Board of Elections' decisions to count a number of votes, where the envelopes that contained the ballots had various, we can call them irregularities, maybe the address wasn't written the right way, or there was a question about whether the envelope was completely sealed or partially sealed. And, and of those ballots that the Board had agreed to count, the Trump campaign had challenged that in the Court of Common Pleas here. Since our last meeting, Judge Baldi affirmed the decision of the Board, agreed that those votes should be counted, and then there was a very fast, by legal standards, appeal to the court that reviews all the election matters, it's known as the Commonwealth Court. And the Commonwealth Court upheld Judge Baldi's decision, agreed that all those votes would be counted. So we were obviously very happy that no one was disenfranchised and that the rights was protected. Around the same time, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court issued an opinion that really addressed a lot of these issues, so at this point, it appears very unlikely that there will be any further litigation unless the United States Supreme Court decides to get involved, which with each passing day, that looks less and less likely. Finally, a thread that has kind of run since the very beginning of this current administration's term has been the Taha matter. As many will recall, when this Board came in, as was widely reported, after a jury trial, Bucks was faced with a, what appeared to be a $68 million liability in a class action. That did not count attorney's fees, did not count awards for the plaintiff administration costs. Many people will remember that in the spring, we were glad to report that we had negotiated a settlement, we had put a cap on attorney's fees and the plaintiff award, and had brought down the maximum exposure for that class award, down from $68 million, down to no more than $10 million. I'm happy to report that all the claims have come in, all the rulings have been addressed by the court, and the final number's even lower than that, it's just over $6 million, which obviously is less than a tenth of what the number looked like when this Board began the year. In addition, besides looking back, we're very happy to be looking forward, because one of the, as we described, win-win outcomes of this resolution, was all the parties agreed on a way to dedicate some, some new funding to address some priorities that are very important to all of these Commissioners, particularly the issues concerning expungements or erasing criminal records that by law can be erased, so that people can move on with their lives and find jobs, particularly people who are in recovery or battling addiction. And after the settlement, we sat down with our public defender, Anne Russell, which Faust is here today, and she put together a very innovative proposal, which we submitted to the court, and I expect after today's meeting, now that the court has given the final approval to this settlement, Ms. Faust will be asking for the creation of a new unit chief that will handle and oversee expungements and pardons. And I expect she'll speak a bit about the importance of that, which we think is, is very exciting. Again, this is something new, this is a positive thing that we have found in this, what was a crisis, that really is something that addresses a lot of the underlying issues in the case, and importantly, provides new opportunities for people who really deserve a second chance. Thank you.
Any other issues? Thank you for that report, and I appreciate the closure on a long and arduous chapter.
Yeah. Thank you.
And, and really, I have to, I should stop again, and thank you once again. You came in and took this from an incredible mess and costing the taxpayer $68 million to, to where it is now, so we are, we are very appreciative. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Harvey, do you have any?
Sure. Thank you. I did, was being told that I actually missed a board appointment, and then looking through my, on my phone, getting to the point where I need glasses and, you know, not, not gonna, not gonna.
Nothing wrong with that.
Not gonna do that yet. So, so we do have one person for the Library Board, Holda Taylor. Term will expire on 11/123, so I'll make a motion to appoint Ms. Taylor to the Library Board for three years.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Next, I just want to, just want to thank, again, everybody for all the work they're doing, especially, as Ms. McKevitt already talked a lot about, the Health Department and all the contact tracing that's been done, and, and even with scaling back on the level of contact tracing, just because they're just not physically able to do it anymore to the level we were. Just for people to understand what contact tracing is, because we still get emails about people, from people who are, you know, wanting to know, you know, you know, why, you know, our Health Department's taking direction, taking the decisions, making the decisions they're making, et cetera. You know, contact tracing isn't just sort of calling somebody up, you know, Joe Smith, and saying, you know, "Hi, Mr. Smith, do you all feel well today? Okay, fine. You got your test? Okay, fine. You know, stay home and, and, you know, hope you feel better. You know, who do you live with? Okay, fine." And then you hang up. The contact tracing is actually really in-depth detective work. It is not a simple process. It's not something you can train somebody off the street to do. We have people who have backgrounds in epidemiology, who have, have histories of doing this in the past, who are working in our, in our Health Department, and the information that we're gathering, really, in some cases, goes further back than the people themselves realize. You know, from the very beginnings of this pandemic's effects on the county, we, our Health Department was contacting people and asking them when they felt their first symptoms, and the person would say, "Well, I had a runny nose on Tuesday," or something like that. And then they'd start probing a little bit, you know, "Well, did you have any aches and pains?" And a person would say, "No, that was..." And they think, "Oh, well, you know, wait, uh, yeah, kind of think of it. I did feel, you know, Sunday morning I woke up, felt a little, you know, stiffly, okay." Was there ever a day that you couldn't taste or smell anything the way you should have? And the person would first say, "Oh, not really. Oh, no, actually." Now that you think about, you know. And really taking people back, in some cases, days before, when they, when they had a symptom and didn't know what it was. And that's an important part that gets, I think, missed by a lot of people, because once you can really isolate when the first symptom was, then you can start the clock backwards, in terms of how many days have gone past, where were you in the time before that? And, and that's, that's really the, the. And, and that's, that's really the, the data that we've gathered, because up until recently, we were contacting about 97% of the people who were testing positive, gave us information about this county that was sort of, you know, much, much, much more in-depth and much, much more intensive than a lot of the information other counties, in some cases even states, have. That is what we've been using to make our decisions as a board, not just the Board of Health, but as, as Commissioners, in terms of deciding, you know, if someone should be on quarantine for 14 days or seven days. You know, our Health Department was criticized a lot for, for doing, you know, a modified quarantine or shorter quarantine. And yet the CDC just announced that they're moving to a shorter quarantine. And so it's, it's something that we were able to do because we understood how it spread here in Bucks County. The decisions about schools were based on all the data we were gathering, starting back in March, you know, that we were able to, to make decisions about, you know, how schools could open safely if they chose to do that. You know, I was had a conversation last night with a school board member who admitted, he said, you know, "When I first heard about the three-foot distance between desks, I didn't think that was going to work." He said, "But now I see that it does." And it's, you know, it's something that's, you know, certainly our Health Department, through our information, you know, understood that if you set up the protocols properly, if you're wearing masks, you know, these simple steps do work. It's, it's really not rocket science in a lot of ways. And it's frustrating, certainly for our Health Department, it's frustrating for us as elected officials to know that there are people, including some who, who work for the county, who still refuse to believe that just wearing a mask can make a difference. That just, you know, washing your hands can make a difference. And thankfully, the impact we're seeing on our hospitals has not been that huge. We're roughly, I think, around 70 people hospitalized throughout the county just strictly for COVID, and that's in all six hospitals. And that's information we're getting from the hospitals themselves. It's not something we're creating. We're actually getting it from the state, actually, from, and the hospitals report to the state. So people on ventilators, I think, is still single-digit numbers, which of course is, is, is good overall. We, thoughts and prayers go to those who are on the ventilators and who are suffering through that and their families. And we're certainly hopeful that they can make a recovery, as, as many do. But coming out of Thanksgiving, heading toward Christmas and other holiday seasons, just please encouraging people to just think about people around you, not just your family and friends, but your coworkers and who they interact with and who they may be going back to when you're taking those actions, so. And finally, just want to end with, you know, wishing our residents here in Bucks County, employees as well as staff who were, who were Jewish, Happy Hanukkah. Hanukkah begins next Thursday, so wish everybody a Happy Hanukkah and hopefully a healthy season as we're heading through winter months and the holidays. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Deidre Oliver?
Just, just a couple of comments. Well, I, you know, first, I, I think thankfully we're over the election, so... But again, I want to, again, thank all of our Board of Election and all the people and staff and extra help that really, really did a, just a phenomenal job here in Bucks County. And again, I think thankfully we're, we're past that now. And so we don't have to talk about that anymore, which is a good thing. The coronavirus, I mean, you know, it has, there is a surge, not only here in Bucks County, but, but across the country. And, you know, our, again, our Department of Health under Dr. Damsker is just done a phenomenal job. They just work so hard. I, I know at some point, I think Commissioner Marzegliak had to go down there and make sure people were leaving at night for a certain time and they weren't staying there all night and working. So I just want to, want to, again, thank them and the Department of Health. Just, just a couple of real quick points, I name, because, you know, we're, we're working on our budget here in Bucks County and we've got to have it, have it done by the end of the year. And I think two things that happened recently, and one in Harrisburg, one in Washington, really impact what we're doing here in Bucks County and our budget. First, the, the state passed a budget after the election. They had, they had passed a, a partial budget in June and they finalized the budget right after, right after Election Day. No increase in taxes, which I think everybody was, was happy about. The state figured a way out to use the $1.3 billion that they had left from the stimulus package they got from the federal government. I, I understand that they used it to pay salaries and overtime because of the impact that COVID had on the state. So they passed a budget and the good news is that there was, there were no cuts to human services at all in the state budget. So that, that's good news for Bucks County, that there were no cuts. And human services takes up about 40, 40% of the state budget. And earlier in the year in June, they had passed a education budget. Education takes up about 35% of the state budget. They had passed an education budget with no, no cuts for education as well. So I think those two, those two things are good news. And a little bit of good news coming out of Washington, because everybody's been talking about another stimulus bill and how much it should be and what should be in it. They couldn't come to an agreement before election, but it was very heartening to see that a group, a bipartisan group, bipartisan Democrats and Republicans, senators and representatives, standing together earlier this week, proposing what I would call a compromise between what the House Democrats want and the Senate Republicans want. So they tried to come in the middle somewhere and they proposed a compromise of over, I think it was over $900 billion for a variety of reasons. And let's face it, people are struggling. And more than struggling, people are really suffering out there right now all across this country and here in Bucks County. Hunger's a problem. Paying rent is a problem. Unemployment is a problem. People not working is a problem. And so that $900 billion compromise kind of touched on all those, all those issues. There was also money in there, again, for businesses that are really struggling. So it is my hope, before we get to January 20th or before the end of December here, anyway, that maybe they can get together, Democrats and Republicans, with the President, with President Trump, and come up with another stimulus package that'll, that'll help an awful lot of people. And from what I also saw is there, that there were, I think, at least a couple hundred billion dollars for state and local government to help them plug maybe some of the holes they have with their budget. And I think that would be a really good idea and probably something that would be good here for here in Bucks County. So let's cross our fingers and say a prayer that the Democrats, the Republicans, the President all get together in Washington and come, come up with a very, very much needed stimulus package that'll help the people that are really struggling and suffering here in this country. Thank you.
Thank you, good points. Any comments or from the public? Anything online, first of all? Mr. Khan?
Nothing online, Commissioner.
Anybody in the public like to speak? Seeing none, is there any motion for adjournment?
They're moved?
Is there a second? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.